Welcome to the City of Coolidge City Council Regular Meeting, March 25th, 2024. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sienna, would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Tom Bagnone.
Present.
Councilmember Adriana Savicja.
Here.
Mayor John Thompson.
Here. Here.
Vice Mayor Jackie Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Tatiana Murietta.
Here.
And Councilmember Eric Daniels.
Here.
We have a term, Mayor.
Thank you. Under presentations, the first one is Proclamation for Week of the Young Child, 2024. We'll read that. Whereas all of Arizona's children deserve access to quality early care and education environment, and whereas quality childcare programs build children's lifelong learning skills during the critical years from birth age five, and whereas ECE teachers and childcare providers are the essential workforce that helps Arizona parents get to work or school, and whereas funding quality childcare is a smart investment that improves family well-being, strengthens communities, and grows our state's prosperity, and whereas Arizona Association for Education of Young Children, First Things First, and other community organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the 53rd anniversary of the Week of the Young Child, and whereas these organizations are working to improve equitable early childhood opportunities that provide a strong start for children in the city of Coolidge, Arizona, and whereas public policies that support ECE for Arizona's youngest learners help our families, communities, and the economy thrive. Now, therefore, I, John Thompson, to hereby proclaim April 6th through 12th, 2024, as the Week of the Young Child in the city of Coolidge, Arizona, and encourage all citizens to support and invest in early childcare and education in our community. The next, we will move on to the monthly report by the Coolidge Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, Lynn.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. January's stats, our reinvestments are Arizona AZ New Horizons Realty, Curves, Gin's Helping Hands, Panal Fairgrounds and Event Center, the Procter &amp; Gamble Company, Day Auto Supply, Dreamline Collision Center, Clemens Plumbing, Arizona at Work Panal County, El Grotto, Coolidge Church of the Nazarene, Panal Hispanic Council, God Let's Be, it's hard to say that, Enterprise, Coolidge Pediatrics, Keller Williams Legacy, Remax A-Bar-Z Realty, Coolidge Lions Club, GT Auto Motive One, Heritage Coolidge Funeral Home, BCBSAZ Health Choice, Florence Copper, KNS Sports, our new members for January, our La Palma Corrections Center, Evange Invergie, it's a new solar company, Kohler Cool HQ LLC, and Arizona House Representative, Teresa Martinez. So, our visitation was 244 local visitors, 72 in-state, 16 out-of-state, we did 777 referrals. Year-to-date, for our visitors is 333. Cascaran Ruins was 13,786. Panal Geology Museum was 185. I've added a new one, the DAV Museum, because that's another asset in our community that I think you should know that the visitation on. It was 26th in January. Some things that went on at Cotton Days went off really well. We were pleased with everything. We had lots of food, booze, rides, lots of fun, great parade. The Jim and Mineral Museum got the door put in, compliments of the Flag Foundation donation. We're really excited about that. We'll be doing a ribbon cutting on that soon. We're working with the Panal Healer Senior Council and some of the local medical clinics around here about putting on a senior health fair. Some upcoming events, we have Market on the Move on March 30th, Easter in the Park, March 30th, Airport Fly-in, April 6th, and that's the last one for the year. Is that right? City Adopt a Street cleanup airs in April 13th. Luncheon, State of the City, we're looking forward to that, to hear all your updates, Mayor. April 17th. Community drop-off dump date is April 20th. Arizona at Work Panal County Community Meeting is April 23rd, and that's a real important meeting. If any of you guys can make it, it's an opportunity for us to get a resource and let them know what resources we need in our community. And the next CEDC meeting is August 8th. That's all I have.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by Joe Ortiz, Public Works Director from Panal County. Welcome, Joe.
My name is Joe Ortiz. I'm with Panal County Development Services. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today here on the, what we call it, Preserving Our Future Transportation Maintenance and Improvement Fund, giving a quick update and education on what it is and basically what it isn't. As I go through this, I got your one and best guy here, Ben Navarro, that's going to help assist with the presentation. So, as I go through here, please stop me if you have any questions, comments, concerns. I'll be glad to stop, and hopefully, hopefully I get the answers. If not, I can take them back and I'll get them for you. So, how road maintenance, how are the roads maintained and repaired within Panal County? We have three main funding sources. We have our VLT, our Vehicle License Fund, which most of you know is a tax for whenever you buy a vehicle. Part of that goes into this pot of money. Our other one is Highway User Revenue Fund. That's an 18-cent gas tax that was, well, really hasn't been revisited since 1997, and it's been stayed, it's stayed at that rate since that point. So, between those two, Vehicle License Fund and the Highway User Revenue Fund, those are mainly utilized for our operations and overhead, our labor, the equipment. Some of that dollar does go towards some maintenance or small projects, but the big one is the half-cent excise tax, the third one, which, like I said, goes towards our Transportation Maintenance and Improvement Fund. That, well, what we're here today is kind of explain what it is and what it isn't. So, what it is, is a half-cent sales tax that whenever you go out, you buy anything within Panal County, there's a half-cent charge to it. It goes into this fund, and then it gets redistributed. I'll dive in a little more detail in a few other. A lot of this, for us, anyway, Panal County, the majority of that dollar goes towards maintaining our existing network. That, that's extremely important for us to make sure that we can get our chip seals, our fog seals, slurry seals. We do do some light projects, smaller, low-volume type projects, you know, less than 100 average daily traffic, or less than 200 at most. We do some what we'd call asphalt-rock-dust palliative, which is a double-chip seal on a dirt road. That's where a lot of that, that funding goes towards. So, one big bullet at the bottom there, some misconceptions out there. We have a lot of folks that think property taxes go towards maintaining your roads. For, at least unincorporated area of Panal County, we never have used any property taxes to go towards maintenance of any of our roads. So, a little history. There we go. Wrong area. So, a little history on the half-cent excise tax. So, this has been in existence for 40 years now. It has a 20-year cycle life. The first, first time it was originally passed was in 1986, and you'll take a look at the population back then, it was, it was right around 100,000. The proposition is 400, and it barely passed with 51.1%. And then that sunset, like you said, in 20 years, December 31st, 2006, but then it was renewed in 2005, and you can see that, that 20-year period, we more than doubled in size as a county as a whole, both unincorporated and the cities and towns. We grew to about 235,000. And then you can also see that it was, it was a pretty good turnout for the yes vote in that year with almost 74%. So, that brings us up to close to today, December 31st, 2026, that's when this 20-year cycle ends, and it will sunset. The little note on the bottom, trying to clarify what this is and what this isn't, what this is not, it's not the same thing as Proposition 417 or Proposition 469. Just to let you know, little reminder, 417 was part, related to the RTA, the Regional Transportation Authority, and that was passed in 2017, but was shortly discovered that it was unconstitutional and went into litigation, and now that's kind of stuck in limbo right now. So, in 2022, that's when Proposition 469 was tried and didn't pass. So, those two propositions, 417, 469, the difference between what we're, we're talking about today is that those two taxes, or those two propositions, related more to the overall connector networks, the larger connector roads, the arterial roads, not any of the small one-mile or less. These are big connectors for east-west corridors, north-south corridors, the bigger type projects. That's kind of where that was, that was headed back in that time. So, so the Transportation Maintenance Fund, these funds are distributed on a population-based formula to not only unincorporated Panal County, but also to the cities and towns. And there's a laundry list of the cities and towns within Panal County that receive some of that funding, and Coolidge is number three. Number three on the list, not number three in population. So, how the funds are used, so like I mentioned, these are used for a lot of our pavement preservation, our maintenance of our existing paved roads. We do have some road widening. We do utilize it for a lot of traffic safety improvements, some pothole repair, of course, pavement preservation. There is some new road construction, but when I say new road construction, it's usually a, a small one-mile type project, just because of the funding that's necessary for those type of roads. It only can go so far. And then some intersection improvements. But by far, for at least the county, we utilize most of it for pavement preservation and just trying to get our existing roads to last. So, some of the, the goals of this fund, the big one, improving public safety, so making our intersections a lot safer and making them well-connected streets, basically to ensure that our emergency response times can be kept to a minimum, and that's done throughout the whole county. I'd also like to say that it manages growth. As you know, Coolidge has grown substantially, and the whole county has grown substantially. So, it's just trying to keep up with that growth to hopefully reduce some of the congestion and basically just maintain that quality of life. Protecting our taxpayers. So, preservation basically ensures that our roads are going to be lasting a lot longer. And Ben could probably attest to this, is that it is a heck of a lot cheaper maintaining and preserving a road, because once you lose it, it's, it's 10 to 20 times more expensive to come back and replace a brand-new road. So, to rebuild, remove and rebuild, it's just not cost-effective. It's more cost-effective to maintain what we have. And the final bullet, air quality, that's kind of what I mentioned before, our asphalt-rock-dust pallitives. I know for Panal County, there's a lot of non-attainment areas that we spend our dollars on. One of those ADQ mandated but not funded requirements of we have to show some type of activity of how we're going to mitigate some of our air quality, but they don't give you any money to make that happen. So, this is what we use some of that dollar for as well. So, looking at some of the dollars, here's a couple of charts for you. These are numbers that we took right off of ADOR, there's Department of Revenue. The first top, top two lines there, that's just showing you some of the funds that we've received so far, receive it on a monthly basis. So, that's fiscal year 23, 24. That's approximately, I think, seven months shown on here, seven or eight months. So, right now, this fiscal year, we, we show that we, we received 20, just over 26 million. But to give you a better idea of the total yearly generations of this dollar, we went back a year, fiscal year 22, 23, to show you a full year, and in that full year, it, it came out to be about 36.5 mil. So, that's dollars that's generated, put into the pot, the big pot, and then it's, this is before we actually distribute, it's the total dollars. So, let's talk a little bit about distribution. So, this is a pie chart showing all the different entities, the cities, towns, and the unincorporated area that receive some of this dollar. And as you see in the green, this is 3%. Last FY 22, 23, the city received approximately 1.1 mil. Ben averaging about 95,000. But like I said, this is all population-based. And one of those things I like to point out, because I know there's, there's some entities that say, "Well, our population really hasn't grown." You know, "We're not going to receive more dollars." That's, that's incorrect. So, really, it's the population of all Panal County, and if we have more population within Panal County, that generates more half-cent sales tax. That, that increases that big pot of money that gets distributed in each percentage to each city and town. So, the population does help. Get on my soapbox real, real quick before I pass it on to Ben. So, this is half-cent sales tax. So, back to support your local community, I strongly advocate, I guess, spend your dollars within your city, within the county. Don't go to Maricopa County, don't go to Queen Creek, don't go to Gilbert, because none of that dollar gets recycled back here. All you're doing is, is sending that dollar to that tax base, and we receive no benefit. So, I'll get off that soapbox and then turn it over to Ben.
Okay, so as you all know, we push the buy-local program over here, and it's for that reason right there that we, that we push it, is so we get those, those tax dollars here. That's constantly been pushed, that's always been pushed as long as I've actually been paying attention to. Spend your money here so we get your money back and invest back into your community. So, Mr. Ortiz ran through some of the projects and where the money goes. For us, this is where, this is where our money goes. We're in the middle of our chip season right now, so anybody who's driven through town sees where the, where the money goes. Those chip seal projects that we're doing is roughly, we're contracting out for about half a million dollars, and they're only doing half of the work. Our, our city crews have done the other half of the work by, by prepping. And so, we spread our money out all over the place for fog sealing, curbing, sidewalks, striping, all kinds of stuff. You can see that these are some of the projects that we've done. This was chip seals last year when we were working on Fourth Street Northern, Pima, Main Street. We did a pretty good, pretty good section of that, laying down chip seals, and these are the, the interior roads of our, our town. As he talked about, the non-attainment area for dust, that's when we're actually putting down what the county calls ARDP. We've always called it a double-chip seal, but this is on a dirt road. That's always been dirt. ADQ has demanded that we have to do 5% of our roads every year to knock down the, the dust that's, that's around and that people breathe. And so, that's of our overall roads. We have 50 miles of dirt road that we have to take care of. 20 miles of it is under the, the traffic count, so we don't have to include that, but there's roughly 30 miles that we have to get paved as part of this program. And so, it's expensive to do these chip seals and prep these roads, and so we've got, like you said, they, they didn't offer any money, but they said, "You're going to do this." And so, we, we have to do it, so that's just part of it. These are some of our paving projects that we've done. Signal Peak, which was a, a pretty big project. Coolidge Avenue, we just got done, and also Addaway Road. We're looking to do some other paving projects within the city of Coolidge. We're actually going to do the other side of Addaway Road, which these funds help pay for that. Any of you guys have seen the stuff that I've run through council know that paving a road is not cheap. Chip sealing is a heck of a lot cheaper, but that's just not an option for everything that we do. And so, we do a lot of maintenance stuff, too. We do striping, crack sealing, fog sealing. All this stuff helps stretch out our dollar. It's like Mr. Ortiz says, it's cheaper to maintain a road, put a little fog seal on it, oil it up, and make sure it lasts so you can get your, your full life expectancy out of it, rather than have to reconstruct a road because of the extreme expense.
What is fog sealing?
Fog sealing is, for layman's terms, it's spraying oil onto the road. And we're actually going to be doing some fog sealing here in the next couple of months. Getting some of the older roads that are starting to dry out, you spray an oil on it, it helps rejuvenate the road, seals up the cracks, and so the water doesn't penetrate and extends the life of your road.
Thanks.
And it's back to the Joe Show.
Thanks, Ben. Yeah, there you go. I'll take the Joe Show, that's all right. Doesn't have to be Mr. Ortiz. So, back to what we have today, looking at the population, like I said, 20 years ago, our population was about 250,000. Now, we're well over 450, we're 467, population-wise. So, I also explained that this local funding that we're talking about today will expire with this 20-year life cycle, December 31st, 2026. So, that's kind of what we're trying to do today, January through March, do some of this public outreach for some of the cities and towns, and trying to get some feedback and, and get some of those questions answered, that I'm, I'm sure a lot of folks, hey, look, I, I hate paying taxes myself, so I gotta, I have to know and make an intelligent decision on what that is. So, that's what we're trying to do with some of this public. April to May of this year, we're really hitting it hard and talking to our board to hopefully formally request an election for this November 5th. But we have to start that in June to get all the pamphlets and everything squared away for that potential election and getting all the information out. So, we have to start that in June to hopefully meet that November 5th date. So, like to end with these, because we always ask, or being asked, "Well, what happens if we don't receive?" This is what happens. If we don't receive this, this dollar, it, it, it's going to be detrimental, I know personally for the county, just because we wouldn't be able to maintain roads properly. So, we just won't get that longevity of, of what we need for our roads, and I guarantee you, we'll, we'll have to lose some of those, and that's, that's not great. That's not anything that I know anybody wants to see. So, one more item here, just part of that public outreach, we do have a open house meeting set for Coolidge, April 4th. I believe it's, can't see. Yeah, it's here at the city council chambers on the 4th, between 5:00 and 7:00. Dedrick and Tara will be out here, hopefully, getting questions answered from any of the residents that you have, or if you guys have any more questions, feel free to show up on that date, and hopefully we can get those questions answered for you. So, with that, that's pretty much all I have. I take any questions if anybody has any.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ortiz? Nope. You did a good job.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving to call the public. Sienna, do you have anybody that's, okay. You've got, if they call your name and you come up to speak, address the council, please state your name and your address, and you have up to three minutes to talk to the council.
Can Mr. Tom Thompson come up to the front, please? Can you?
You make these guys happy. Hit me with a bat.
Come on. All right, this is a word is for Mr. Thompson and the council. This is for, from our team members right here, our board members from the Little League. I'm going to present this back to you.
Thank you, sir.
That would be good.
He's supposed to the back.
Good one.
They need that.
Those are the... Those are the gentlemen that are running the Little League and are, and are coaches, some of them. So, thank you very much for what you guys do. We appreciate it. I know the one was Tommy got up at four this morning and went to work. And uh, just got back from work and came to the meeting. So that's what he does six days a week. The whole gang goes together. So, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else, yeah? Anybody else wanna address the council? All right, then we'll move out of call of the public. And we'll move into items for consent. Is there anyone up here that wants to get any one of these items pulled out for individual consideration?
As Mayor, Mayor Thompson, I'd like to pull both items ten and thirteen, please.
Okay, ten thirteen, all right, anybody else? Okay, then here we go. Item six, consider approval of the updated drug and alcohol policy as required by the Federal Transit Administration for transit funding. Item seven, consider approval to unfreeze capital, uh, to purchase two rifles. Uh, rifle grade ballistic shields from FX Tactical in the amount of eighteen thousand forty-four dollars and sixty cents. For the Coolidge Police Department utilizing Arizona State Contract CTR zero four nine one seven eight. Item eight, consider approval of entering into a maintenance service agreement and a correct course, Seraco and the City of Coolidge Police Department for continued maintenance service of the Police Department Investigations Interview Room Recording Equipment. Item nine, consider approval of submitting a twenty twenty-four Proposition two oh two grant application to the Gila River Indian Community in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to help with emergency housing repair funding for the housing rehab program. Item eleven, Resolution number twenty-four dash zero three. A resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Coolidge, Arizona. Adopting a fair housing policy, making known its commitment to the principle of fair housing and describing actions it shall undertake to affirmatively further fair housing. Designating April twenty twenty-four as Fair Housing Month. Item twelve, consider award of bid to Sport Court of Arizona in the amount of seventy thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars for the replacement of the gym floor at the youth teen center. Authorizing staff to negotiate a contract and authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents. Item fourteen, consider approval of the claims for the month of February twenty twenty-four. And it looks, okay, and that's, that's it for that.
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I make a motion, we approve items number six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, and fourteen as read.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, Norma. Oh, Sienna, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Tom Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Sevedra?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Tatiana Murietta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jackie Henry?
Yes.
And Mayor John Thompson?
Yes. Okay, move to item ten. Consider approval of submitting a twenty twenty-four Proposition two oh two grant application to the Gila River Indian Community in the amount of one hundred eighty-seven uh, thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars to fund the dog park in phase one of the new regional park for Coolidge Parks and Rec.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to answer any questions, Councilmember Bagnall.
You go first.
Uh, I just wanted to say, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. And I'm happy to answer any questions. As you know, we've been working on a design for a regional park on the west side of our city, so.
Yeah, okay, well, I certainly don't have any problem with a dog park. And if I did, I'd have to hear about it from my wife when I got home tonight. Cause she's very much into dogs and everything, so. My only, my only question is, uh, the master plan on this, when I was reading through the documents and everything. It states in there that the uh, concept that was approved was approved by staff. And I was just curious, did the, does that go through the Parks and Recreation Board first and then they come back? Or how, how does that process work?
So it's not necessarily approved by the Parks and Recreation Board because of their advisory committee?
Right.
So they've seen all these documents, they've seen everything. Um, they're certainly okay, they've certainly given me plenty of suggestions that I've taken back to the design team. Um, but yeah, they've had their say, they'll continue to have say. You'll probably see them up here in about a month when we do a presentation for you guys. Um, about the, where we are with the design and where we are with the building of the park. Uh, so there's certainly involved, not necessarily on a voting capacity, but an advisory capacity. And um, staff takes that into advisement when we're going back and forth with the design team.
Okay, great, yeah, I just wanted to be sure, cause when I read that, I just didn't see anything regarding uh, the Parks and Rec Board has, having been part of it. And I just wanted to be sure that they were, they're on board with what's being presented and everything.
So yeah, they're, they're absolutely on board. As we move forward, pass the design into construction, you know, fingers crossed. Um, they'll actually be one or two that are on that construction committee and help with the building and the, all the different amenities and things that need to go into the park.
And what, what do we have currently in that uh, in the fund for uh, going in?
We have roughly over two million dollars for um, from impact fees that, that gets to go towards phase one of this park. Um, we've got some donations that the mayor and the city manager are working on. And this grant, thanks to Mary who's sitting in the back, and other grants that we'll bring forward to try to get this phase one knocked out. Um, and then start begging for money for future phases at that point.
And the uh, first phase, what is the projected cost on that?
We've got a few different numbers. I mean, there's some astronomical numbers if we want the most art park that's ever been built in history. Um, which is upwards of twenty million dollars. Um, but we're probably looking, I'd say, a good guess between five and six million dollars. And a lot of that is just the infrastructure that has to go in, you know, before you even see any of the cool stuff get built.
Right, okay.
I mean, that sound about right, Rick?
I think so, it's, you know, you'd be frightened by the numbers that we initially saw on the uh, the cost of the entire park.
Well, I, I saw that and then I was going, geez.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we all did, we took a big, deep breath and we said, we're not gonna build a park. We'll build it for much less than that. And we've got, Ricky and I have been out and we've talked to contractor who actually helped us with, with the landfill and other things, which got some, went out and visited some parks that they did. And so we're, we're gonna try to build a very attractive, very functional park within a reasonable budget and within a reasonable timeline. But this park is gonna be something that's built over many years, uh, you know, sixty-nine acre or whatever, sixty-five acre park.
About sixty-six acres and it's, it's Logan Simpson Design Company that's consulting on this with us. Gosh, I think we met him out there last May onsite and have been rolling since then. And then a long time ago, I believe in our council retreat, almost a year ago, we had talked about um, some low maintenance watering plants and you and I had that discussion, Councilmember Bagnall. So a lot of that and a lot of pictures you see, you'll have all this green grass everywhere. We'll lean towards more of natural where we don't need the grass um, to help save money initially and going forward and just conserve water.
Right, okay.
The, the plan that we've been working on is just, it's just a remarkable park. And I think one day, I think when it's built out, it'd be a legacy park that this community will be very proud of, I think.
And, and the one thing, I don't know if uh, anybody's ever been down to Tucson to the uh, where the racetrack is and the park, you know, what they have along the river there. And they have a farmer's market there every Sunday. And they have this one area that's just, you know, it's covered and the vendors all come to either side and everything. And you know, something, I know, I know that, that can't be cheap, what they, what they put into that thing. Uh, but you know, something could be uh, kinda included in that. I think that would go, do a lot with the community to have some.
You're exact, you're exactly right. So there is sections in this park that will be set up for vendors, farmer's market type places, access for them. Um, so I know exactly what park you're referring to. Obviously ours will look a little different, but there is space for all that and that's in the design. Um, and then, you know, when we come to you, it's not next council meeting, but the following one, I'll be giving a presentation. You'll see everything we've been working on. You kinda throw at us what we've missed. I mean, we obviously don't see everything, that's where the Parks and Rec Board's been instrumental. Rick, Ben's there every time, Gilbert's there every time, Phil's there. So we've got a lot of eyes on it, uh, we certainly don't wanna miss anything. Um, and if we do, we can pick it up in the construction phase, so it's not gonna be the end all be all. This document, you know, this stuff we show you in a month from now, but um, it'll be as well on the way to, to something we really desperately need and something that we want.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen, consider approval of accepting the right of way dedication pursuant to the dedication agreement and warranty deed of dedication of right of way for Coolidge Avenue and Ninth Street from BSD Coolidge twenty-six LLC. Edgewood and Arizona Limited Liability Company, authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents.
Mayor Thompson, Vice Mayor Henry, councilmembers, this project that, that this, this is on is, is called Edgewood. If you recall, we did one like this where the, they dedicated the right of way and easements to the city with, like Hawk Hollow. We did the same thing. So we're fortunate that we have uh, Councilmember Bagnall that has a lot of experience looking at these deeds and covenants. And we thought we had covered and caught any um, any sort of leans on this and uh, discovered a deed of trust. And after conferring with Councilmember Bagnall and our attorney, just give, we found a deed of trust and we'll have to get their signature to verify that the deed of trust had been satisfied. So per our attorney, we can go ahead and approve the dedication with the understanding that we will ensure that deed of trust has been satisfied or we get their signature acquired. And Councilmember, if you correct me if I'm wrong or?
Or consent from the underlying lender, yeah.
Okay, good.
Right, and subject to clarifying the legal description of, to make sure the legal descriptions are correct. So if we could get a motion, I think it's approved, subject to clarifying the legal description and making sure the current deed of trust is removed before the agreement is finalized.
Okay, so that's the motion? Okay, all right, then uh, if there's no other question, then I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
The second.
All right. There's a motion and a second, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right. So that goes into business under regular items. Item number fifteen, ordinance number twenty-four dash oh six. An ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the City of Coolidge, Arizona. Adopting twenty twenty-four amendments to title either what, six or eleven public places by the reference to add chapter ninety-four Public Places to the city, to the Coolidge City Code, providing for severability and the effective date thereof.
Mayor, Mayor Thompson, Vice Mayor Henry, councilmembers. So this is uh, uh, we recently identified some needed changes to our regulations. And we looked at various codes with, with our attorneys and also conferred with our uh, guidance from our police department. And uh, so we're bringing those updates to you for consideration. And we didn't have, uh, as we grow, we didn't have some areas that addressed, you know, obstruction of public right of way like sidewalks and public places. So we looked at Phoenix, we looked at Gilbert, and then we looked at Maricopa. So Maricopa seemed to be the one that, that, that kind of uh, went along with what we do, how we have our properties and how we use our right of ways. So we went ahead and worked on that and uh, uh, we went ahead, we're bringing this to you. But it, it gives us different sections that we deal with, including camping in the public right of way. There's some penalties or aggressive solicitation, uh, some camping uh, regulations on this. Also some things that, that deal with like uh, alcohol in front yards where they don't have permission from the owners, like a vacant house. You know, there's things we've seen that we haven't had happen here, but we wanna be proactive. And uh, PD thought this, this would be really good to have in addition to what we already have. Cause a lot of the regulations we had were like uh, you know, public drinking alcohol in parks. But we didn't have anything in the public right of ways itself, so this is what this does. It just adds additional tools to our, our codes to allow us to deal with different situations. So I'll answer any questions we may have and I may count on our attorney and also police if we need to.
Okay, thank you. Gilbert, does anybody have any questions on any of these? Or on this one? There was a number of them included. No? Okay, then I need a, I need a motion.
Here. Move to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash zero six as read.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Tom Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Sevedra?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Tatiana Murietta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jackie Henry?
Yes.
And Mayor John Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to report from mayor and council and our city manager. Start down here with Councilmember Bagnall.
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing.
All right.
No, I don't have anything, Mayor.
I have nothing.
Just briefly, uh, April twentieth, we'll have a free dump day for people that would like to take their bulk trash items to the uh, I guess it's over to the Bulk Trash Yard area, is that right, Ben?
Yes, the CDC Yard.
CDC, okay, and then that'll be from uh, from seven AM to twelve on the April twentieth. And then on April the thirteenth, the week before, our citywide cleanup day. So anybody that's volunteered to, to clean up their mile, we would like to invite them to come out that day and pick up some litter and trash in our community and make our community look a lot nicer. Bless you. And uh, let's see, the only other thing I'd like to kind of share with each of you, I think uh, tonight before you leave, if you get over, right here where Phil is sitting. We have a uh, general plan that Phil's been working on for the last over a year now, I think. Um, basically, it's not a complete rewrite of the plan that we have in place today. That plan has worked very well for us, it's an update of that plan and it's in sixty day review. So feel free to take a look at it. Um, a lot of work's been done. He's had monthly meetings with our Planning and Zoning Commission to go over every element of this plan, including land, you know, land use elements, circulation, parks and recreation, open space, uh, water resources, um, implementation, cost of development. There's several elements that are required under the state law. Uh, and we've basically uh, kind of, the plan is to, after the sixty day review, go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing, eventually come to council for your, your adoption of the plan. And then ultimately in November, uh, take it before the voters and have them uh, basically vote to a, uh, vote on this plan, which has to happen once, basically every ten years, I think under the it's been about ten years ago since we did our last one. And so um, I encourage you to take a look at it. If you have any major comments or concerns, we've been working with the development community, trying to update the land use plan accordingly. Uh, and so I, I think it's been a really good effort on the part of our Planning and Development Department. Schedule is on the inside of the book. Little summary, I should say, little summary on the inside of the booklet. So pick up a booklet and take it with you and if you don't have anything better to do, read it at home at your leisure or whenever you want to and give us some thoughts. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, then I guess you need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, we're adjourned, thank you everybody for coming.